Our legislature was not only reluctant or just flat out not listening to the public education community, they weren't even talking to the private education community because if they had, I think this bill would have looked a lot different.
We have on the line with us today, Ryan Renaud. Ryan Renaud is the president of the Huntsville City School Board, member District Four, and he has been sounding the alarm for weeks now. I mean, probably this is, you know, every time this has come up over the last few years, you know, he's been trying to educate folks about the impact of quote unquote "school choice," right? That's the nice kind of euphemistic name that they're giving their voucher proposal this year. And this year, unfortunately, it passed. It had not passed when we set up this interview, so we were hoping that, you know, it would be, this would do a little bit maybe to encourage folks to oppose it. But nevertheless, it has passed. So it's worth understanding, it's still worth understanding exactly what it means to have this passed in Alabama. So Ryan, really appreciate you taking the time to talk to us this morning.
Absolutely, guys. I'm excited to have an opportunity to have a candid conversation about it. Jacob, Adam, nice to see y'all and appreciate the good work you're doing. So looking forward to a conversation about the CHOOSE Act and its impacts on public education throughout the state.
Yeah, absolutely. And yeah, appreciate you coming on. And I wanted to have you on because, well, you know, we've been talking about this for a few weeks now. We've been covering it from our perspective. We interviewed Senator Arthur Orr about it, the author of the Senate version of the bill. And, you know, also frankly, throughout my career of education activism, I've beat up on a lot of school board members. And I want to give school board members the opportunity, when they're doing the right thing and advocating for the people, I want to celebrate that as well. So that was part of it, too. Like, you know, I feel like I owed some school board members a solid, because you are sounding the alarm and some of your colleagues on the Huntsville School Board have been as well. And I really appreciate that because, as we've reported on the show, there has been an interesting dynamic politically where a lot of the education groups have, you know, been neutral on this. Literally testified as neutral in the committee hearings a couple of weeks ago. And so that, I think, is interesting to see. But I really appreciate you speaking out. And I wanted to start with, why are you opposed to the CHOOSE Act as a school board member, as a citizen in the community? Why are you against this bill?
Yeah, so, you know, I want to be abundantly clear. I am not opposed to parents having a choice in how they want their child to pursue an education. If they feel that homeschool is the best track for them, they have that option. If they feel that private school is the best option for them, they should have that option. But the reality is, those options have existed for generations now. My opposition to this bill is holistically rooted in the fact that we are using public money to subsidize the cost for arguably the wealthiest 5% in the state of Alabama. Historically, I mean, for the last, I don't know, five to 10 years now, we've got an ample amount of data from other states like Arizona and Ohio, the Carolinas, on what the impacts of these voucher programs have done, not just, and this is the part that is not even a talking point in the state of Alabama yet, but it will be in the coming years, this does not just affect public education. Arguably, that's the most direct impact, undoubtedly. But this is going to affect communities from every aspect of property values to economic impacts. I mean, you know, here in Huntsville, we use what's called TIF fundings for a lot of the development throughout our city. TIF districts are not possible without a strong public education system. In fact, you can, you know, you can go ask council and mayors across cities that are experiencing high growth and development, they use their public education systems to incentivize multinational corporations or even US corporations to come and build developments in those communities. Without a strong public education system, nobody's taking private school and homeschool numbers and bringing them to corporations and saying, "Look how good our private schools are." That affects your cost of living, it affects your quality of life. Corporations, when they look at towns and cities in Alabama and anywhere on the country, the first question they ask, it's just like if you're going to buy a home, the first question you ask is, "What school is it zoned for and what is the data and the metrics on that school? How well is it performing?" So this bill goes far and beyond public education, but I do want to stick to the data and the impacts of public education for the context of this conversation today. But that's kind of my justification for opposition.
Yeah, well, Ryan, I know that you're going to get into some of the data, but the most fascinating thing, in my view, about the whole, this whole saga, is that the proponents, at least that I've seen it, and maybe you've seen different, and I'm interested if you have, but at least what I've seen, the proponents have not even tried to make a show of justifying it based on results in other states. I haven't heard a single time or a single article about how, "Look, they did this in Arizona and look how great the results have been. They did this in Wisconsin, look how great the results have been." I haven't seen that a single time, actually.
And that is very, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, well, no, it's just been fascinating to me because, like you said, we're not inventing the wheel here. This has been done before, and there are places that have had these voucher programs in place for a decade, right? There has been rigorous studies on these programs, and the data is out there. And the even funnier thing is that there are ways that you can manipulate the data in one section to try to make it look good. And they're not even trying to do that. It's just like, there's so little data, and then also, it seems like they're being lazy because it just happened. Like, there was very little debate about it. And, yeah, so, does that track with your experience when talking to people about this?
It does. In fact, I was having conversations with some staff members and volunteers with AESB this morning. We're looking at other pieces of legislation because unfortunately, our session is not over, so the damage is not done. They are pushing other avenues to limit municipalities and county commissions from collecting local revenues, which inevitably would feed into our public education system, but also other departments, right? Police, fire, various municipal departments. So I was talking with them about this, and you actually heard Arthur Orr talk about how the data can be manipulated, right? Well, what he failed to acknowledge, and I appreciate you bringing that point up, is they're not even trying. And the reason is, it's very strategic. They don't have data that they can even manipulate to say this was effective. I mean, in July of 2023, just a little under a year ago, the Arizona governor deemed their voucher program as unsustainable. It was costing the state of Arizona $900 million plus. So in Ohio, the data is out, more than $400 million of their voucher programs were going to students who were already in private schools. So, I mean, we're sitting here talking about creating choice, you know, the governor sits there at her desk and signs this law into legislation with a bunch of private school students behind her. And it was almost, it was perfect, because you would think, if you're creating choice, you would have families who are either in the public system or in a homeschool system who are going to take advantage of these. But they weren't. There were kids who were already enrolled in private schools. And it was the picture perfect moment of really pointing to the fact that they knew they weren't creating choice, and they didn't present any data to justify that statement. But for some reason, it was a statement that they ran with, and I think that was solely rooted in polling data, right? The pandemic created an adversarial effect on minorities throughout public schools throughout the state of Alabama. We are still mitigating the learning loss of COVID. And we're seeing great growth because we've been very strategic in how to address that. But they knew, based on polling data, based on political party lines, that parents were really rallying behind this notion of, "We need parental choice in education." And the reality of that conversation is, you have a choice. I mean, I've spent the last two months of my life, as soon as I heard about this bill coming, and it's, you know, what, the sixth version of a voucher program we've seen. So I said, "Okay, well, let me take a different approach," because right now, we're not getting positive feedback. When we go down and lobby in Montgomery, or even DC for that matter, we're not getting a lot of positive feedback as school board members, as superintendents, as public school administrators. So let me take a different approach. So for the last two months, I've been meeting with all of the private school leaders in North Alabama. And I've done this in one-on-one meetings, but I did not talk to a single one who thought this bill would have a positive impact on their enrollment numbers. Because the reality is, they don't just interview the student and look at that student's proficiencies and aptitudes, they interview the family. And the number one factor that private schools have in their enrollment and application process is, how engaged are the parents? So for parents who think that they're going to take their kid out of a public education system and throw them into a private school with the same level of engagement they had in the public, I mean, I hate to break it to you, this isn't Ryan Renaud's disposition, this is the disposition of private school leaders, you're not going to get in. And, you know, they talk about how this is going to be such a great asset for students who are part of the special education community.
Yeah, I'm glad you're bringing that up, yes.
This is the heart-wrenching part, is that, you know, in Huntsville City Schools, we spend roughly $35 million on expenditures specifically for special education. 17 million of that money is locally funded. Excuse me, 13 is state and five is federal. Well, in this bill, and you heard this in the city, the committee hearings, private schools, they know that they're not going to accept special education students. And the legislature knew this. So what did they do? They built in language that said, "Oh, well, the private school kids who are in special education, they're still going to be resourced from the public system." So we're losing the $7,000 voucher for that student, we're losing the enrollment money for that student from the ETF because they're not enrolled in the public system. Oh, and by the way, we've got to go send the staff and the financial resources over to a private school to service that special education student. So they have just triple dipped in the public school coffers to service a student who's never going to be in a public school, except for the fact that reality and history tells us, they're not going to get into that private school, because private schools are not equipped to service the needs of that student. And so on the rare occasion that they are, the earnest is still going to be on the public system. And that, for me, it was heart-wrenching to see. And then you heard in the Senate committees, I don't know who the gentleman was that was presenting the bill and debating in the Senate committee, but he told just a blatant lie and said, "Well, it actually depends," he said, "we're going to maintain the status quo," meaning, public schools are going to serve these special education students in the private community, right? So he just admitted that public money is already going to private schools on an as-needs basis for special education students. He just admitted that. But he also told a blatant lie because he said, "Well, there's one occasion where it's not applicable, and private schools would care with earnest," and that's if, or it depends on, who deems that student to be special needs. Because he's basically saying, "Well, if the school deems it, and it's not the parent, then it doesn't apply." Well, that is just factually incorrect. And everybody, anybody who's dealt in public education, any parent who has had a student with special needs or tried to get them tested for special needs will tell you, you can't put a kid in a special education class without parental consent. So to sit there and lie to the committee and say, "Well, it depends on who places that student," no, it doesn't. Because a school cannot put a kid in a special education program without parental consent, they can't even test them without parental consent. And so, you know, between the fallacy that was creating choice for parents, or the fallacy that was, "Well, it depends on who's placing the kid in the special needs program," this bill was something that was a farce, and it was something that the public was just absolutely in the shadows and in the dark on, because the legislature, for whatever reason, steamrolled this through. And, I mean, it was really heartbreaking to watch.
You talked about how it seemed like misleading that they were, you know, the choice thing. And you talked about how private schools just, you know, they're not going to let a lot of these kids in. And we had Dr. Joshua Cohen on to, he's an education policy expert, to talk about some of this stuff. And he said that, you know, like, yes, obviously, there are private schools that are going to be better for one reason or another than public schools, but those, like you said, they're not going to be letting a lot of these public school students in. And instead, what you're going to see is, you know, Bubba's Bible School opened up, and obviously, Low Road, not quality education. And what we've, the data that we've seen from that is that children who leave public school and go to a private school actually see deteriorating academic achievement on par with, and in many cases above, the deterioration in academic achievement from COVID. So this is, you know, it's just absolutely, all around, seems like a terrible, terrible policy. And like you said, subsidizing the wealthiest people in the state of Alabama who were already going to private school, and taking that money from, you know, from public schools in Alabama and from the folks who are taxed in Alabama, and Alabama's regressive taxation system, where poor folks pay more as a percentage of their income than wealthy folks. So really, this bill is probably the largest wealth transfer in the state of Alabama in years, from the bottom to the top.
And I want to talk about, you hinted on this, you know, it's a subsidy for the wealthiest in our state. But it's also a subsidy, it's minority rule. I mean, less than 14% of students in the state of Alabama attend homeschool or private school. And actually, enrollment in private education over the last five years has gone down. We've seen more people transfer out of the public system and go into homeschooling programs. And so, you know, this minority rule notion, when we have a supermajority in the legislature in both chambers, where we're subsidizing costs for the minority of our students and families, is something that, for me, is unfathomable. But I also want to touch on this is, you know, aside from it not being a level playing field because of the unfunded mandates that the legislature has on the public system, we have no idea what the long-term implications on this are. Because in 2027, the cap goes away. It's not just $100 million out of the ETF or into the education savings account. There is literally no cap on who's eligible. Any family in the state of Alabama can come and take advantage of this program. And, I mean, we saw it in Arizona. It robustly jumped to more than $900 million. And that's what we're looking at in Alabama here in three short years. I mean, for me, it was just, it was really, really tough to see. And then, you know, aside from that, I don't know if y'all saw this in the bill, but there's nothing in the Alabama legislature right now that solely protects public education from proration. Now, we have a small, what's the word I'm looking for? There's a code that basically says, if proration is more than 3%, that we can transfer funds, and there's a slight protection, but it's very loose language, and it's applicable based on the legislature's interpretation. In the CHOOSE Act, these education savings accounts that they're funneling money to private schools are fully protected from proration.
Wow. Explain what proration is for folks who may not know.
So basically, and I think, I want to say 2009 was the last time that the governor issued an application of proration, where basically they're, they've overspent before the budget has come to the end of the fiscal year. And based on their projections of spending, the governor can partake in an executive action, for lack of better terms. And I think Bentley was the one that did it in 2009, and he applied a 10% proration. And so basically, adjust your budget by whatever percent that executive action deems necessary. And so, I mean, you're talking about people taking a hit on their salaries, you're talking about school systems taking a hit on their budgets, which, keep in mind, a lot of school systems rely on contracts. So when we sign a contract, it's not that, "Oh, well, we just cut that contract back." No, at the end of that fiscal year, that money is still due to that vendor. You know, transportation, for example, here in Huntsville City Schools, we spend $14 million on transportation. Only $6 million of that comes from the state. So if we were hit with a proration, and instead of $6 million, we only got $4, our school district is going to be responsible for covering that $2 million differential. But the private schools are fully exempt from proration.
Hey, five seconds, just wanted to say that this is only possible because of our donors. If you want to see more of this, then consider donating yourself at tbllr.fm/donate.
Wow, yeah, yeah, I did not realize that. And I'm glad you brought that up. And that kind of segues into what I wanted to get at as well, which is, you know, the justification I've heard from some legislators is, "Well, there's a record education budget," right? There's, basically, there's plenty of money to go around, so why are y'all so upset about this little pot over here? And so, you know, I've been asking around and talking to education folks, like, "Do you think your school has all the money it needs?" Right? Are there any, like, needs that aren't being met? And of course, anyone in public education knows that there are a lot of, there are a lot of needs unmet across the state. Huntsville is fortunate to have a pretty, you know, robust local tax base compared to a lot of, you know, particularly rural areas in the state who have very little local funding. But could you talk about some of the, what are some of the things that you would like to see funded and supported from a local school district perspective that isn't happening now, and certainly seems less likely, given, you know, the funneling of money to this program?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so, first of all, I want to touch on the Record Education Trust Fund budget, right? Because that's a big hot-button issue, and it provides justification to the legislature to say, "Well, we can afford to transfer funds to give choice." Well, you're also selectively and very intentionally omitting a lot of context. Let's talk about why that budget is more robust than it's ever been. Well, first of all, more people are living in Alabama today than they ever have in the history of the state. We have more students than we ever have in the history of the state. We are generating more revenue than we ever have in the history of the state. Let's go back to a year or two ago, when State Superintendent Eric Mackey threw out a term and said, "Well, the budget, we have a lot," I think it was about $2.3 billion, in what he deemed "unanticipated revenue." Well, let's keep in mind, the legislature acts in according with the needs and the demands of our constituents, right? So if we have $2 billion in unanticipated revenue, meaning that money was never budgeted, like, we had our budget, and then we got the revenues in, and we said, "Oh, we've got a huge pot of money that we didn't allocate." Well, we could very easily, the State Board of Education, the State Superintendent could draft a plan for that money, submit it to the legislature, and the legislature could submit that to the governor and say, "We need a special session. We've got this huge pot of money, we've got this long list of needs." That never happened. So we instead created an education savings account, and we're now directing that money into the private sector. So that's one thing, just to contextualize the conversation about the largest budget, is that that statement holistically lacks a lot of context. Secondly, in terms of needs, yeah, I mean, I touched on two of these already, right? So special education is a huge, huge population here in Huntsville City Schools. We have the highest concentration of special education students, arguably, in the entire state. There might be three or four other districts who can compare to us. The state average is 10%. Right now, this year, we have almost an 18% student population who are serviced under special education programming, right? So I broke the spending down, $35 million is what we've got, 13 from the state, 17 in local dollars, and five from federal funding, most of those being grant awards. That's a huge area and a huge deficit, because we have an adversarial, or, excuse me, we have a disparaging large population, right? Most school districts in the state don't have that problem, or not problem, but challenge, I should say. Special education is a huge one that they could address, and the money's in the coffers, right? Where, when we go and lobby in Montgomery, we get, "Well, the money's not there, we're putting it in a savings account," but all of a sudden, the savings account money is flowing to private districts. And then we've got transportation, we've got security issues. Now, fortunately, in Huntsville City Schools, we've got, we pretty much lead the state in terms of security. We've got an internal security team, which we call our chief security officers, we've got SROs in just about every school, and then we've got security bubbles. But every school district in the state does not have an SRO, or every school in the state does not have an SRO. Now, parents have made it abundantly clear, as we have these conversations about gun reform and shootings, that we want an SRO in every school. Well, that could be a line item in the budget. That's one that we've been asking for, for four or five years now, and we've yet to get it. Now, I do want to provide context to that, in that HPD and the Madison County Sheriff's Office are struggling to get recruits. They've seen the same hit on applicants that we have for teachers. So a problem with that is bodies, right? We need people applying for these jobs. But another part is funding. I mean, even if they had the applicants, they don't have the funding to pull people off of a task force and throw them into a school as an SRO. And the other part is, not everybody's a good fit for an SRO. Just because you're an effective drug task force member or traffic patroler doesn't mean you're going to be a highly effective SRO. But I would say, security, special education, transportation, and then a big thing for me is the unfunded mandates. The Literacy Act and the Numeracy Act play a huge, or serve as a huge financial impact for public education districts. These are things that the state told us as local boards of education, "You are going to do this, because we think it has a value in transparency and tracking the data in public ed." Well, then why didn't you fund it? And so, another huge one that we spend, I want to say, please don't quote me on this, I think it's around $3 million a year. We are very fortunate in Huntsville City Schools. We have a pre-K in every school. We have a pre-K unit. Now, the demand is so high that a lot of parents are frustrated because we can't service everybody, and you get put on a waitlist. But if we had state funding, we could add units, hire more teachers, and have students in a classroom setting at ages, you know, three and four, before they're enrolling in kindergarten. But we don't get any money from the state of Alabama for pre-K. I mean, you heard President Biden talk about it, and he's advocating for a nationally funded or federally funded universal pre-K system. Would love to see it. We've heard conversations in the state, but right now, we don't get a penny for it. Pre-K's huge, security, transportation, special education, I mean, I could, we could have this conversation for days on end, but I think it really goes back to, the money's there, they haven't allocated it. It's not being dispersed into our local school districts. Yet, here we are, having a conversation about subsidizing private education. And I just, I don't know, I do know where the pressure's coming from, and it's along party lines. I mean, that's not really hard to find. You can, I don't know if y'all are familiar with this, but there's a really scary proposition out there, if you've heard of Project 2025. And it talks about dismantling the federal Department of Education, which, we'll save that for another day, but summer learning programs. We spend a couple million dollars a year to help mitigate the learning loss of COVID here in Huntsville City Schools, and we see tremendous growth. Just last year, when we got our data back, we invited more than 2,500 families, I think we had 800 that showed up. And of those 800 students, we saw almost two years of growth in one month of a summer learning program, fully funded by local dollars. We didn't get any money from the state for that.
Yeah, yeah. I think those are, like, really important for folks to recognize, that there are so many unmet needs. And when you hear talk about a record budget, there is a lot of context that's left out, because, as I mentioned, you know, Huntsville is fortunate to have local taxes that, you know, Selma doesn't have, right? And, you know, they will often couch some of this language in, like, equity terms, you know, that this is for disadvantaged folks, when really, this is taking from the many for the few. And, you know, so I really appreciate you laying out some of those areas. I think pre-K is one that really resonates with me, because we have a very successful pre-K program in Alabama. First-class pre-K is well-renowned. But it is not funded to where every student can actually take part. We have a great pre-K program, it's not universal. You've got districts like Huntsville that are using their own funds to try to, you know, meet these needs. But we know how effective pre-K can be in getting children ready for kindergarten and ready for elementary school. It has a great academic impact, but it's also a relief for working families, frankly. It's a form of social welfare, in my opinion, because childcare is incredibly expensive, and it's a benefit to the community when parents and families can take their three- and four-year-old to a high-quality program and know that their kid is safe, know their kid's learning, right? And they're not having to come out of pocket $400, $500, $600 a month or more. So, yeah, I mean, there are just so many missed opportunities, and a budget is a reflection of your priorities. And it's clear that the state legislature and Governor Ivey has made it a priority to put public dollars into private pockets, rather than, you know, reclaim the goal of an excellent public education for all students. So it just, yeah, it's very frustrating. I really appreciate you speaking up. I appreciate those who have been speaking up.
Well, Adam, before we let him go, I had one more topic that I wanted to ask him to touch on, because I haven't heard just a whole lot about this, and that's the accountability for the private schools that are going to be getting all of this subsidization from Alabama's public school system. What are the accountability measures for, you know, what are schools going to have to do to get this money from Alabama?
Yeah, Jacob, it's a great point. I appreciate you bringing it up. You have not heard a lot about it, because there is none. Literally, the only reporting requirement is that test scores from these private systems are to be sent to the parents.
But they don't have to take the same tests?
No, absolutely not. There's no standardized testing requirement, there's no ACAP, there's no, no. They are not beholden to the Alabama Literacy Act, they're not beholden to any of the state mandates, they're not even beholden to any testing requirements. I mean, I literally looked at it this morning, and there are only requirements to ensure that they're sending the test, the testing data to the parents. And then there's a submission to the Department of Revenue for the families that are participating, but notice, it's not the Department of Education.
Right, right.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, and, you know, as you mentioned earlier, Jacob, about Bubba's Bible School, I, I do really wonder if we're going to see some fly-by-night operators, you know, come through, because we've seen that sort of thing in other states, where folks try to, you know, corner this as a market opportunity and think, hey, we're going to have a bunch of families out here, think they have $7,000 to spend, and, you know...
Yeah, well, and we asked Senator Orr about that, and, you know, we talked about how these schools will like, close up after a few years, and, you know, I mean, his response was like, well, you know, I would think that that's kind of the market correcting itself. And it's like, you know, in a sense, but also, it's ruining, you know, hundreds of lives in the process, you know? Having, having a school go under is not the same as having McDonald's close up, right?
That, that's a great point, Adam, and Jacob too, is, you know, when I was having conversations with private school leaders over the last two months, one of them are actually who brought this to my attention, they said, Ryan, our concern really, and they're not going to lobby against it, right? Because that's why they're in the private system. They don't want anything to do with the Department of Education, and justifiably so. But they're not going to step out and put their necks on the line and lobby against this, but one of them brought this to my attention, and they said, Ryan, our concern is that this bill is actually going to lower the standard of education in the private sector. Because to your point, when we get a bunch of Bubba's Bible Schools, it's going to be parents who don't get into the school they want to be. And all of a sudden, they hear of 100 other parents who didn't get into the school they wanted to get into, and they're going to go, well, we've got this money, we can, we still think we can do it better than the public system or a homeschool system, so they're going to form a private school. And they're going to go pay, I mean, let me tell you right now, here in Huntsville, market rents are not cheap. And it's not cheap to buy anything. I mean, these people are going to be paying tens of thousands of dollars a month in rent, and then there's not going to be any accreditation, there's not going to be any sort of standardized curriculum or testing. It's going to be parents who got frustrated and said, well, we'll figure it out along the way. And ultimately, you're going to be hurting the student. I mean, to your point, it, and we touched on this earlier with it being minority rule, but there's over 780,000 students in the state of Alabama enrolled in the public education system. So you can talk about a record budget all you want, but there's a record number of students. There's 80,000 students across the state of Alabama who are enrolled in private schools. So I just, it's, it's something, that was a point of frustration that I had, is that our legislature was not only reluctant or just flat-out not listening to the public education community, they weren't even talking to the private education community. Because if, if they had, I think this bill would have looked a lot different.
Adam, do you have anything else?
I don't know, I just really appreciate it, and, yeah, keep up the good work in terms of trying to educate folks and, and continuing to lobby for, you know, local school districts, because there's just a lot more that needs to be done. Every kid deserves a great public education, and I think that has to be the goal. And that's what we have to, you know, unite folks around, parents, students, educators, community members, the vast majority of us rely on the public school system. We all, as a community, depend on a thriving public school system, so, yeah, let's just keep on fighting the good fight.
Likewise, guys, I appreciate the time and opportunity, you guys keep up the good work as well.
You just saw a clip from The Valley Labor Report. We are live every Saturday morning from 9:30 a.m. till 12:30 p.m. And we pride ourselves on keeping all of our content free to everybody, so that we can talk to as many working folks as possible. If you support the work that we're doing, you think that it's important, you think that it's good, then consider making a monthly contribution to the project, and you can do that on our website, tvlr.fm.